With operational guidelines, aides will have some responsibilities for for supervising children during the day, which may include duties. That being said, the IP compliance with the IP is the priority. So those are the only additional terms.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? I'd just like to say that I appreciate that the ESPs are taking on some share of duties along with their their colleagues. I think that's probably much appreciated as a as it relates to operating a school community. So it's appreciated. All right. If there's no further discussion or comments from the Northboro School Committee, I'll entertain a motion to ratify the agreement.
Kelly Gannett, so moved.
We'll need the specific language. I can
Okay.
Put it out there. It's on the agenda.
Yeah, I got it right here.
Thank you.
I move to ratify the agreement between Northboro School Committee and Northboro Teacher Association, Unit C.
Yep.
Second.
Excellent. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion from Northboro? Okay, hearing none again, restating the motion and the second, the motion on the table is to ratify the agreement between Northboro School Committee and Northboro Teachers Association, Unit C. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tagliaferry?
Yes.
And myself, Keith LaBelle. Yes, it passes unanimously and the agreement is ratified.
Through the chair.
Please.
I would just like to echo Keith's remarks around our educational support professionals and administrative assistants. Every employee has a critical role to play in our operation and we're very fortunate to have such dedicated ESPs and admin assistants. They work very closely with our students and our teachers and are in a large part of the success of our organization and students. I just want to take the operation to thank them. And also just to thank them for being partners in the negotiation process.
Yes, well said. Thank you. With that, we'll move to the second part of item two, which is the agreement between Southboro School Committee and Southboro Teachers Association, Unit C. So I'll hand it back to you, Mr. Martino and Ms. Richards, to give us a summary, please.
Sure. So similar to Northboro, the Southboro Teachers Association, their Unit C, we entered into negotiations early in winter. We had several meetings and we have come to a an agreement. And I will turn it over to Mrs. Richards to kind of share the highlights of that agreement.
Good evening. The, the Southboro Unit C, aides and administrative assistants or ESPs and administrative assistants receive or are looking to receive a 2.5 cost, cost of living adjustment for the first year. The second year, a 2.5 cost of living adjustment and a 2.75 cost of living adjustment. The first year, the Unit C aides will have agreed to take a furlough day to provide an offset. And just so that everybody is aware, the association was looking for something similar to what the teachers received and the Unit A had provided for concessions for Unit A. But we're looking for Unit C to, to receive the COLAs similar to what Unit A originally received. So also in addition to wages, the longevity has been adjusted to reflect the COLAs. And in addition to that, the deletion of the agency fee clause as well as the time off clauses mirror the teachers clauses. In addition to that, the sick bank, the association is looking for time worked in other, in the Northboro and regional school districts to count towards creditable service for the sick bank. And in addition to that, transportation and transition assistance now fall under operational guidelines. And the toileting stipend has been adjusted to reflect the COLA.
Thank you. With that, I will entertain questions or comments from the Southboro School Committee.
Through the chair.
Yes, sir.
So I would like to make a comment. I guess I'm really the third one in in this general comment. I'd also like to express our appreciation to the ESPs and administrative assistants for their willingness to do this. And it really is gratifying to see that I think we have a team effort between this group and our teachers in educating our students.
Other questions or comments? Hearing none. Mr. Chalan, I will hand it to you to go ahead and conduct to see if it's the will of your committee to make a motion on this matter.
I will entertain a motion to ratify the agreement between the Southboro School Committee and Southboro Teachers Association, Unit C.
So moved.
Moved by Katara. Martin, is there a second?
Seconded by Kamali.
Seconded by Kamali Omeili. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Katara?
Yes.
Kamali?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So it's a unanimous vote.
And through the chair.
Thanks.
I echo my comments for the Southboro Educator Support Professionals. And I think in both communities, Northboro and Southboro, I think it speaks to the partnership that educators have in Unit A with Unit C. And it's a, it's a very strong partnership. And again, we're very appreciative of all employees and our educators, educator support professionals do amazing work and we're very fortunate to have them working with our students in Southboro and Northboro.
Thanks, everyone. Let's go ahead and move to the next item on the agenda. Item number three.
So, so item number three on that is the memorandum of agreement between the Northboro School Committee and Northboro Teachers Association and Southboro School Committee and Southboro Teachers Association. And for the, on tense and purposes, the, the MOAs are a tentacle. So I'll just share a few highlights from the memorandum of agreement. It focuses on reopening and reopening safely. So we have several areas that we, we discussed and negotiated with our educators. The first was health, safety, health and safety practices, protocols and equipment, which included hygiene expectations, equipment and air quality. The next section was learning models and schedules, educator health and wellness, changes in teaching and learning practices, and then accommodations, sick time and leave of absences. And then lastly, professional development. So we've met with the teachers associations and came up with this agreement, this MOA. This MOA has been ratified by the Southboro Teachers Association as well as the Northboro Teachers Association. And again, I think it speaks to the partnership that exists between the districts and its association. So we're very fortunate. This is not the case everywhere.
Thank you for the summary. Mrs. Frank has a question or a comment?
I, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I move that we ratify the memorandum of agreement 2020 to 2021 school year reopening between Northboro School Committee and the Northboro Teachers Association.
Second by Lauren Bailey Jones.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion from the committee or, or other comments on this matter? Mrs. Gannett, please.
So I do have a question for, about teachers association. So are, are 100% of all teachers part of the association? And do all of the teachers know about when the association does these things?
That's a good question.
Yeah. So I think that, um, so it's part of the association's responsibility to provide communication. And in terms of association membership, I can have Heather speak to, you know, generalities, you know, what typical districts have in terms of enrollment of the association.
Many, many of the employees are involved in the association and pay, pay dues. And it's, it's up to individuals to sign up to participate in the association. They actually have to sign a card so that that authorizes us to be able to withdraw their dues.
And I'll just comment. So the association presidents in Northboro and Southboro and the vice presidents do a great job communicating with their, their membership. They, they have meetings, they have check-ins. So I think that they've done an outstanding job communicating these types of changes. And, and again, it's ratified by their membership and it's incumbent upon the association to make sure they communicate and make sure that each member attends if he or she wishes.
So, so teachers, so in the community, if you hear teachers are saying like, we haven't been heard or notified, they just might not be a part of the association and that could be why they are unaware of things. I'm not saying necessarily our community, but in general, when you hear things like that, is that the potential or?
I can't, we can't speak, I don't, you know, just in generalities, I won't speak to other associations. But yes, there could, if you don't have strong leadership from association presidents, one sign of a lack of leadership is miscommunication. So that could be, Kelly, one of the signs of not strong leadership. We, we're, again, we are very fortunate to have outstanding leaders and communication has, has not been an issue. They, they keep their members well informed.
Are you finished, Ms. Gannett?
Yes, thank you.
Mary Ellen had her hand up momentarily.
I did. I was just going to confirm what Greg said because I get notifications from being just ending my term as on alert leave of absence from my position of being a part of the union that in Southboro, we got many, many emails about all of the changes that have gone through, through the summer.
Thank you. I don't have everybody on one screen, so a virtual hand might be preferred if other Northboro members have further questions or comments.
I do. Sorry. I couldn't find my raise of hands. So I, yeah, I just wanted to comment. And I, I think we've probably mentioned this before, that it was definitely a difficult process to have these conversations with administration, our school committee and our educators. But what I think I took away from the experience during our negotiations is that we were all very respectful and we really wanted to hear each other out, hear all sides of the situation and, and come to an agreement that was, was fair to all sides. And I really hope that this does this. I feel like it does. And I just want to extend my thanks to the associations for their continued collaboration. Because I do think that, as you know, Greg, you have said, our relationships are what really matter throughout this, this whole process. So thank you to our association for that.
Thank you. Mrs. Frank?
Hi. Yes, just echoing what Lauren said. I wanted to thank all members of the administrative team, Lois Mason, who helped in the IBB process, the interest-based bargaining process. You know, the two sessions that we had were very informative. And everybody was a great listener, collaborative and listening to everybody's concerns. And I think this MOA speaks very highly of that, that cooperation and collaboration we have. And I would just like to, I always say, happy first day of school to the teachers and educators. But this year's gonna be happy first day of school with keeping all the safety and the health wellness in the most forefront and hope that we have a very successful year going ahead with everything that has been put on our plate during the summer and continuing from last year. So I'm just wishing my best to everybody as we get into the teachers that may be out in the audience. We appreciate everything that you have done and we're here to support you. So thank you from the bottom of our hearts.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Any other questions or comments from the Northboro School Committee? Hearing none. We have a motion and a second to ratify the memorandum of agreement 2020, 2021 school year reopening between Northboro School Committee and the Northboro Teachers Association. This will be a roll call vote. Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tagliaferry?
Yes.
And myself, Keith LaBelle. Yes, the motion passes unanimously and the agreement is ratified. Moving into the second part of this is the agreement between Southboro School Committee and Southboro Teachers Association. So I believe, Mr. Martino, you probably have no further comments, having presented both together. Okay?
I just echo that the Northboro MOA and the Southboro MOA are, mirror each other. They're identical.
Okay. Thank you. So I will take questions or comments from the Southboro School Committee.
Through the chair.
To Chalan, please.
Well, I, I, I would like to, first of all, I'd like to say that Lauren Bailey Jones and Joan Frank were most eloquent in describing not only the, the process that we went through, but also welcoming back teachers. So if I tried to do something, I'd fall short of what they said. So for Southboro, I'm just gonna do a me too. We really appreciate, you know, you know, working with folks in that process and we're looking forward to getting back to school.
Thank you. Jennifer, please.
I, I also just, I think it's important to say this multiple times just because, you know, having watched some of the comments on the community pages and our social media that, you know, really this experience at bargaining was pretty wonderful and just in terms of the flexibility, the advocacy for teachers and students and just, you know, I just wanted the community to really understand that we are very, very fortunate in this district to be able to work with such wonderful teachers and who have such wonderful representation. So the process, people should really understand that, that the process was a smooth one that was very clear that the focus was on the best, what's best for kids. And so I just wanted to echo that too. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Martin?
I, so I'm terrible at little speeches. So I'm glad that other people have already said things that I can just say, I totally agree. I just can't sit here silently and not say anything because I, I really have so much appreciation and respect and admiration for the people that we're working with in the association. And I am so grateful that we have them to do what they do in our district. And it was a very smooth process. And I echo all of the positive things that have already been said.
Thank you. Any further comment or questions from the Southboro? Hearing none, I will hand it over to Chair, Chairman Chalan to to entertain a motion on this matter.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to ratify the memorandum of agreement for the 2020, 2021 school year reopening between Southboro School Committee and the Southboro Teachers Association. Do I hear a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion. Katara?
Motion by Katara. Is there a second?
I seconded. This is Kamali Omeili.
Seconded by Kamali. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. We'll have a roll call vote. Kamali?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Katara?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the motion is unanimous.
And through the chair, if I can just echo all the comments that have been made already, I just want to thank the Southboro Association President David Fineran and Vice President Gentoreo in Northboro, Peter Olson, who's the president in Northboro, and then Lester Jamison, who's the Vice President. So again, they have, we have great advocates for education with our association presidents, great partners. And I think that the, the point that I am most pleased with is all four of the presidents are student-centered. They always think about what's in the best interest of students. So I'm very grateful to have the associations to partner with. And I think this is a very important milestone for reopening our schools in this current context.
Thank you. With those of you who have your hands up, if you just lower them before we proceed to the next item, that would be helpful. Thank you. That brings us to item four, which is policy development. We are going to have some first readings of some policies specific to our current circumstance. I will let Mr. Martino perhaps put them on the screen would be, they, they were distributed, of course, to all the membership as well. So you can refer to your own copies.
So just give me one second. So, so thank you. So the, the new policy, the first new policy is face covering policy. It's a 170. And it basically speaks to kind of the, the situation we're in where students and faculty and staff are required to wear masks. This is a recommended policy through the Mass Association of School Superintendents as well as the Mass Association of School Committees. And it basically speaks to what the expectations are. And I'll have Mary Ellen Duggan speak to some of the highlights.
Hi, everybody. So basically, our policy states that we are requiring masks for all pre-K to 12 students and that they be worn properly, covering their nose and mouth. There will be videos to follow for parents and are also informational guidelines that have been sent to parents and are available on our reopening website. There are exceptions or exemptions to the mask policy and those were outlined by the CDC and they are very limited and very specific. So an individual can be excused from the requirement if they have trouble breathing, they're unconscious, they're incapacitated. And they cannot remove the mask or face covering without a system assistance. I believe that should probably say is incapacitated in that bullet, the third bullet down. There are also other exemptions that can be accepted and these will be, are accepted, written from a licensed care provider. If a child or a student has a medical, which is another typo right there, behavioral or other challenge, making it unsafe for them to wear a mask. And so we do need a written request from a physician or a licensed care provider and we will not accept waivers from parents. It needs to be from a licensed care provider. So there are times when it is appropriate for a mask to be removed when social distancing is enforced and adhered to. And that would be during mask breaks while eating or drinking and during physical education classes while outside. So the while outside should not be a separate bullet. It should be during the physical education classes while those classes are taking place outside. When they're inside, masks will be required. The exceptions are listed above also about the medical, behavioral or other challenges. And these would be even when we receive the exception, this next paragraph is saying when we receive the exception or the exemption from the physician, that this will be discussed with the family, with the school nurse, with the principal on an individual basis. If people don't have masks or come to school without masks, we will provide masks for them and we will provide them for all staff. If there's a violation of this policy, we would first consult with the parents and the student to see whether an exception or exemption is appropriate if additional education is needed for the parent or the student. And if any accommodations need to be made. If we had done all of these steps and there's still non-compliance, then it would become a disciplinary issue. I think that sums it up. We also have guidelines to go along with these masks, the mask policy for both staff and students.
Thank you, Mary Ellen. I do see a couple of hands up. But before we proceed, I'd like to frame the conversation a bit with respect to the, the process. So what is our target date? Probably a question for Mr. Martino. For getting this policy and perhaps the next one after it as well, approved and put into?
So that is, so typically the policy process is, the policy is reviewed in policy subcommittee, which this policy has been, it's brought forth for first read. And then it's shared with the community for public comment. Edits made and then it's brought forth for a second read and it's, it's the will of the committee can be voted at that second read. However, in this case, I would argue that there, there might be, it might be the will of the committee to, to kind of suspend that typical process because of the nature of this, this policy and the importance of this policy and its timeliness. So ideally, what would happen in a normal setting is this, tonight would be the first read, we'd have public comment and then at the next Northboro and Southboro School Committee would be voted in September. So under that normal process, the, the first Wednesday in September and the second Wednesday of September are the Northboro and Southboro School Committee meetings. That would be the earliest it could be approved unless the committees decide to forego that process and vote it this evening.
Through the chair, would we be able to vote knowing that Mary Ellen's already pointed out a couple errors to it?
Those could be corrected in a live document. Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think those could just be clarified.
As amended, you know, though as amended.
Yeah, ideally, I mean, I see you have a PDF open. If you're not opposed to digging up a lot, a real-time version, that, that might be helpful. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, before we proceed, I just clarify because we're being, it's really important. Is, is nine two too late in a practical sense? Would we have to meet prior? At the Northboro School Committee, for example, if, in order to meet the timeline required by the central office in a practical sense?
So I think there's a great point. So I think nine two and nine nine, it's not too late to have a second read and a vote. So, you know, you could maintain the normal second read and allow time for public review and comment. That was the will of the committee.
With this impacting staff returning? There's. does that work?
Yeah, I mean, I think, Mary Ellen, you can, I don't know if you want to share your thoughts. I don't think it would.
I don't think it would. I think we have a professional expectation that they'll follow the guidelines that have been outlined for them. I think it would be okay to keep the nine-two and the nine-nine.
So through the chair, too, just one, an additional correction. The fourth bullet, it says while outside. It really should say during physical education classes while outside. So this should be one connection.
Okay. All right, I think, I think we've clarified that. I'll go ahead and take the hands in order. So Mrs. Tagliaferry, go ahead, please.
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting. Just a few, one question, and then Greg, I know you're making some changes. That first bullet point that you changed, I think we can, like Mary Ellen said, take out the word in. I think it should just be is incapacitated, and then the spelling error in the next sentence, that first sentence, it should be medical. There was a D missing. So, sorry, the first sentence of the paragraph, yep. And then my question probably to Mary Ellen is, I know you mentioned last night possibly some restrictions on what masks would be allowed. And I guess my question is, how is that going to be communicated to the families? And if it is through this policy, should that be part of this policy? I know you said probably gators would not be allowed. And I know a lot of families are planning on sending their kids with gators because they think it's easy, they won't lose them as, you know, frequently as ones that they have to take off. So I'm just wondering, how is that information going to be communicated to the families? And if it's through this policy, that should probably be in here?
I would hesitate to put that in here because if research comes out now, is that gators, we don't have any peer-reviewed or really firm research about gators, but we do know what, just from incidental, I guess, experiences, that people can drink water through a gator. So I'm guessing that's not great at blocking other things. So the medical advisory team did, when we met, decided that the gators and the bandanas at this point, bandanas probably will always not be allowed, but gators at this point in time are not allowed. But if research comes along, I think that shows that double-layer gator is just as effective as a fabric mask, then I think that we, I wouldn't want it in a policy that needed to be amended. So I think in the guidelines that go with this policy is where it is stated, along with the parent resource information, that was all updated on the reopening website.
Okay, all right, as long as there's a clear way to communicate that with families, because I know many are thinking and stocking up and thinking those are the way to go.
So as, at this point in time, they're not, but that might, you know, we learn something new every day.
Chair, so in general, we make sure our policies are broad. We have our procedures and practices and protocols as separate documents, and as, as Mary Ellen indicated, as things change, we can change our processes and protocols to adjust based on the latest research. So that's typically what we do with policy. They tend to be more broad, and then the policies and practices and procedures are more specific that are tied to the policy.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Bailey Jones, please.
Thank you. So first of all, just to sort of jump in on that. So Erin, actually, your question did come up in subcommittee. So we sort of had a similar conversation about, like, you know, what is policy versus the procedures at the building level? So I just wanted to let you know that we did talk about that at subcommittee. So the red line that you see on the screen, so the district will provide the quality and type of masks required and retains the right to maintain these standards and to verify compliance. I think I know what it means, but I think it's a little ambiguous. I think what it's saying is the district will basically like announce, like what you were saying, Mary Ellen, like, here's the quality we expect of your mask, maybe two layers or whatever it would be in the type. But what, when I first read it, I thought it meant, oh, the district's providing masks for everyone. So I just wanted to get some clarification on that.
So we are providing masks for all of the staff. We do have masks for students if they forget their mask, their mask breaks, they don't have a mask, for whatever reason, they came to school without a mask. We do have masks for them. Desi had sent out guidelines early on about what we should have for supplies of masks for the number of students we have, the number of staff, we have the number of nurses we have. And we do have those, but we are not supplying masks at this time for every student. So I read this as saying that, you know, it gives us that, the right to say, we don't, aren't allowing gators at this time or bandanas. But if you came to school in a gator, we could say, no, you need to put a mask on. But you're not compliant with, with what our policy says right now.
I think it's just a wording issue, Mary Ellen. I think we're all in agreement. I think if it said, and other people can jump in here, but it probably should say the district will provide the requirements regarding the quality and type of masks and retains the right, just because it does start to read as the district will provide the quality and type of masks. It sounds like the masks are being provided. So to, I would suggest an edit along those lines or some other wording. If somebody else has a better way, that might clearly convey that we're providing the requirements and not the masks.
I'm not sure who added, was that from legal, Greg, that sentence?
This was policy subcommittee.
Okay, all right.
Maybe we could say.
Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I think if you look at this, sorry.
Go ahead.
If you.
Is it on this topic, Mrs. Frank?
Yes, it is.
Perfect.
Okay, if you look at this sentence before it, that's why that one follows in red. It said the district will supply masks for all staff members, continuing. The district will provide the quality and type of masks, because it says we're going to supply masks for staff members.
You're right.
That leads into the red one to be a little more specific, what it is to the standard and compliance. I think you have to take the, those two sentences and put them together to understand the gist of it.
Maybe we just need to add for staff right there. For staff, the district will provide the quality and type of.
Yes, yeah.
So that said.
Is that, is that what that means, though? I'm sorry.
I don't think so. I think, I think what.
Go ahead.
I think the way that we wrote it was, that statement wasn't for, I think it was more of what, along the lines, what Lauren and Keith were saying, it's the, the information would be required, you know, the type of it, and not that they're going to be getting the type.
I agree. I mean, if we're, if we're adding for staff here, then I think we need to look elsewhere in the document and ensure that we are providing that the central office, the district is a final arbiter of criteria and requirements with respect to masks used in general, including masks brought in by students. Greg, do you have any?
Through the chair. We strike for staff if we don't add that. The district will provide and identify the quality and type of masks required and retains the right to maintain these standards and to verify compliance. So if we do, if we add and identify, it's, you know, it might be that, that piece.
But aren't we saying that the district is going to tell students and families the quality and type of masks required? Isn't that what the sentence is trying to get at?
Exactly.
I think, I think it'd be something like the district will provide information about the quality.
The requirements.
Required, yeah.
Guidelines, that's the term you use in the.
Standards, like from the end of this next sentence, the district will provide the standards regarding the quality and type of masks required and retains the right to retain these standards and verify compliance.
There's a lot of hands up, folks.
Yeah.
What I'd like to do, though, Roger, just for efficiencies, if anybody else has a comment, and I can't really know, so let me just put it out there. If anybody has a comment on this sentence, so that we don't go to another topic, I think that would make sense.
All right, well, I do.
Yes, so, and, and, yeah, go ahead.
So, and I'm not sure what I'm repeating here, because I'm trying to amalgamate what everybody just said. You know, we make, we make a statement about a student's mask. It's provided by a family. Then we make a statement about supplying masks for the staff members. Then we come back and we talk about providing quality and type of masks required and retains the right, et cetera, et cetera. So it, it almost, I just think that that's could probably be more clear somehow, rather, those, what the meaning of those three sentences. I mean, we're saying we're going to provide them for the, we're going to provide them for the staff. It's required, it's to be provided for, by the student's family, and we are, you know, providing the quality and type of masks out to whoever, I guess. Now, is that really intended to be both students and faculty, even though, even though we're providing the masks for the staff? Or is that just intended, I'm sorry, Greg, I see Greg's hand up, so I'll be quiet.
Or Mary Ellen, yeah, thank you, Robert.
Can I, through the chair, so to Keith LeBelle's earlier point, that, you know, the next meeting is September 2nd and 9th. We do have some time to bring this back to the policy subcommittee and have them do some of the wordsmithing and make the corrections. So it's just a potential recommendation.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say the same thing. We could sit here and work through the wording on this, but since it's going to go through, I think as long as Greg and Mary Ellen are taking back, and those of us who go to subcommittee take back, that this needs to be clarified, then we can work it from there. So what I'd like to do is if you have your hand up and it's regarding this, if it's not regarding this, please put it down. And if you still want to speak on this specific issue with the understanding that it's going to be reworked on this topic at the moment, then leave your hand up. So that would leave Mrs. Frank.
Okay, I just think that this sent, after reviewing it, I think that the sentence for the staff saying that the district will supply masks for all staff members has to be another paragraph, because it seems like this is a paragraph about students, their mask, and the type that we're looking for in the standards. And the fangback goes, if students are in violation of this policy, the next paragraph. So I think you need to separate students away from staff. That was my recommendation. Just pull out the one for staff members, put it into a new paragraph. That's it.
Point well taken. Thank you. Kamali?
Also, on this point, don't do anything now, but it's just my input. You could just write, leave the first sentence, the second sentence, and then start the third one with to ensure standardization, because that loops together one and two. We will provide the written guidelines, dot, 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 continue the rest of the sentence. The written guidelines pertaining to the quality and type of, dot, dot, dot. That's my input.
Thank you. Lauren?
Yeah, I was just going to say, so some of the suggestions with wording is really good, and so I would, I guess, like to recommend that if anyone has wording, if they can give it to someone in your committee that's on the policy subcommittee. Mr. Chair, I don't know how you feel about that.
Yeah, definitely. Very efficient to work this. Get the ideas floated to the right people for the, for the timing of the revision and the rework. Much agree. Any other areas of this policy that anybody would like to comment, question?
So we're gonna, are we under agreement that we're not going to vote on this tonight? We're going to move this back to policy?
We're gonna, we're gonna send it through the.
Move it back for revision.
Through revision a sec, and it's going to come back as a second read, hopefully something that is ready for prime time. Thank you. Katura?
Okay, so I had one suggestion for the second read, and then also just something that I think we can also talk about again in the subcommittee. But so we did, I don't know if it was, if the Northborough Committee got it, but the Southborough Committee did sort of this afternoon at some point, get links to the guidelines for staff, the mask guidelines for staff and the mask guidelines for students. And those are very helpful. They, they give, I think they're draft, but they give, they provide a lot more detail around some of this and some context, which makes it helpful to review the policy. So my suggestion is that before this comes back for the second read, everybody on the committees get the guidelines so they can have that as context, because there is a line in there that says that gators, bandanas, and masks with valves are not allowed. And so I think that would just clarify a few things. And then my, the other question I had, I know in the subcommittee, we talked about putting something either in the guidelines or in the policy itself about precautions for students who are in class with students who are exempted from the mask requirement. And I know that those are going to be few and far between, but I do think that somewhere, even if it's in the guidelines and not in the policy itself, we should identify what the precautions are. I did see in the staff guidelines, there is an additional precaution of a face shield for staff who are working closely with students who are unable to wear a face mask. But I didn't see anything in the guidelines for students. And I know that we did talk about some potential precautions and sort of notification procedures that could be put in place. And I do think that those, in my opinion, they should be defined somewhere.
Thank you. Anything else on this one? If not, I actually had one myself. It's pretty quick. Recess, outside, outdoor recess, I should say, is that a mask break? Or are masks required? I guess, asking for clarification there on where we have settled on that topic.
Mary Ellen?
Sure, recess at this point in time is not a mask break.
Outdoor recess.
Outdoor recess is not a mask break at this point in time.
All right, thank you.
So this, just to get back to this, so that while outside still needs to be deleted if it's moved up to that next line I had said. So there are guidelines about phys ed outside, too. They need to remain 10 feet apart, and those are guidelines that were put forth through the Department of Education.
Okay, Jess?
I wanted to follow up on what Katura was saying. I have heard concerns from parents about if their kids are in classes, in a class with a child who's exempted. And everybody understands, you know, few and far between, but I'm wondering if maybe the district could offer additional protection or, you know, just to kind of ease those parents' minds.
So, so I will add, Jessica, that this was discussed in policy subcommittee, and we did talk about, you know, adding or offering additional PPE. So that is something we'll, we'll go back to and make sure that it's part of the guidelines.
Okay, great, thanks. I wasn't at that one because I was ill, but I'll, I'm on the subcommittee, policy subcommittee, so I should be able to be at the next one.
All right, any other comments on this one? If those of you have your hands up, if you can put them down, that'd be great. And we will transition to the general interim policy on COVID-related issues.
I'm sorry, Keith, I had, I still have my hand up.
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
It was along the lines of being outdoors, so I see that physical education was mentioned. But what about music classes that are held outside where social distancing is maintained? So say, say like if a chorus was outdoors, would they have their masks on singing? Would they have them off? What about banned outdoors? And will that be happening in our schools?
So we do have a policy. So, we do have a policy and some guidelines around music education. Um, and Marilyn, I don't know if you want to speak to, you know, to our current thinking. Um, and we are following the guidelines that Desi has provided in terms of brass and musical instruments and, and so forth, and chorus.
Oh, I was just trying to get to the appendix, so hold on one second, so I can, so I won't be um, telling you the wrong thing, because these guidelines, so just let you know, all of the guidelines are available on Appendix A on the reopening website, live, so when they get updated, you get updated. So um, for music outside, let's see what it says. I don't want to quote myself wrong. Um, they strongly encourage the, they be partially or fully or partially online. Um, those activities, if they're outdoors, they need to be at least 10 feet apart. So it's the same as PE for chorus or singing, if they're outdoors without their masks. Oh, it says with masks encouraged, they should be 10 feet apart. So as of right now, these are by Department of Ed guidelines. Singing outdoors, they need to be 10 feet apart, and it's not permitted indoors now, and it needs to be masked.
So, and, and maybe this is conversation for a subcommittee, but that may need to be reflected in this policy. If physical education's being pointed out, um, then I, I feel like music classes should also be pointed out as well.
I'd like to propose that we, we kind of take that on, in the subcommittee, just for time reasons, unless, unless there's an objection at the moment to kind of rework that accordingly. It's a fair point. Um, and I think we need to go through it.
Through the chair, Keith?
Yeah.
Um, these are for masks, when you can have your mask off. The masks will not be required. If you scooch down, they're a little bit Greg to that little, so it says face coverings will not be required, so for music outside, they still are required. So, music outside, even, they need to be 10 feet apart, but they need to be masked, and those are Department of Education guidelines for this time.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, to be continued, let's take a, a quick look at um, the general interim policy and COVID-related issues. And again, this was provided to everybody prior to the meeting. Um, this, so similar to the mask coverings, we, this is a first read. Uh, most of you, um, except Jess, uh, perhaps a few others were, uh, have seen this before, and um, we'll have an opportunity to revise after this meeting. So we can use this time to get those things that need to be taken under advisement um, and get those out there, so that as we go through the rest of the process, um, we can get this where, uh, where it needs to be. So, it looks like Katara has her hand up, and I don't think we need to go through this section by section at the moment, so I think we can let her kick it off and, and see where that takes us.
Yeah, I, thank you. Um, I just had a quick, a quick, I guess, comment slash question, um, about the class size issue, and I'm, I'm totally fine with this provision, but I'm wondering, I guess I, I wanted to confirm that as we go through this year, um, we'll still be getting at our regular meetings, eh, enrollment information that would show class sizes um, as they are unfolding in these circumstances, and, and have it broken down by, you know, the hybrid class sizes and the standalone class sizes and, and that whole thing, because this is allowing, you know, a significant amount of discretion, and I think it would make sense for us to um, be able to just see how that's playing out as we move forward. That was my thought.
So, so absolutely, we'll be providing those enrollment, um, numbers at each meeting, and it will be a ongoing conversation, and probably more important than ever in terms of just monitoring, um, class sizes in, in regards to the context of, of COVID-19.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Do you think we'll be able to have it at the cohort level, Greg? Will be, will we be able to break it down?
Um, and I, I apologize, I'm moving around a lot, I'm just need to plug in my computer before I move-
No problem.
Yeah, we will, we will have that, um, that data, um, but just, it's, it's something we're working on right now, so I'll probably have more information for the committees around the cohort data um, in the, in the next couple of days or, uh, early next week.
Okay, thank you. Katara, were you all set, you said?
I'm all set, I'll put my hand down, thank you.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Thank you. Um, I had a question about, uh, the attendance paragraph. I just think that there's a few words missing. It's not quite a sentence. Um, and I don't quite understand what it's trying to say, so, I mean, I don't know how much time we want to spend on that, maybe it's a subcommittee issue. Um, but if you could just sort of look at that.
Yeah, let's just flag it.
Yeah.
As, I, I see what you're saying, it looks like there might be a, a verb missing or something early on there, so it's a bit unclear, so we can flag that for, um, for clarification.
Okay, and I wasn't really quite under, I wasn't understanding what this linking was about. Um, I didn't understand that, so that's something that either we can discuss in subcommittee, or if it's worthwhile discussing here, we could do that as well.
I mean, maybe Greg can talk about that part.
So obviously, um, you know, s, if students are, are not well, um, we want them to stay home, that's an important part of our screening policy, so we want to encourage um, you know, students to stay home, and parents to have their children stay home if they, they don't meet the criteria for coming to school. In this, um, this chronic absentee policy, um, it would basically suspend some of the absentee requirements we have. Um, so it would promote parents to think, okay, it's okay not to have my child stay home because he or she's not well. That's the, kind of the, the premise behind this.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies.
Should probably suspend the perfect attendance award for the moment.
Yeah. That's exactly, that's a great example of a policy that does not support what we're, the practices we're trying to move forward.
Yeah, no heroes at the moment.
Yeah.
Um, questions, comments, hands? Anything that anyone would like to see taken under advisement on the revision process for this? Most of our committee members are on subcommittee, so we have strong overlap here, so. Okay?
I have one more.
Yeah.
It's a-
Trying to get your miles tonight.
Um, so a question about the time on learning paragraph, um, at the end. Um, so, I mean, I, I completely understand the intent be, behind this, and I realize that we need to be flexible. Um, I guess, what I would be concerned about is all of a sudden, you know, like one subject being sort of like left off to the wayside and not really getting the time it deserves or needs, so I guess I don't know, how, how can we make sure that doesn't happen with such a, a broad policy here? So it says, uh, "The superintendent may suspend or amend requirements for time on learning for the duration of the COVID pandemic." Which again, I, I, as an educator, I completely understand the need to be flexible. Um, you know, I would, I would be concerned as a science teacher that all of a sudden, my students wouldn't be getting the science education they need, because something else would be prioritized. Um, and maybe that will have to happen with, say, math and ELA, but I guess I just want to know the thinking behind this.
I took it, I didn't take it as classes, I took it as days.
I can, I can speak to this, Lauren, so um, just briefly, one of the, you know, wouldn't be suspending, um, time on learning for science, for example, but it'd be a prioritization process for, for all content areas, that if we don't have the same amount of time to teach the content, what are those priority standards that we'd focus on? And we would, we would engage in that process regardless of what content area it is, so that's the way we're framing it and looking at it. Um, but right now with, you know, the expectation is that we will, um, move through the curriculum and the content um, based on Desi regulations.
Okay, thank you, that clarifies. I can, you know, remember in the spring when, you know, Desi put out, like, these are the standards you need to make sure your students know, the rest are sort of like a bonus, so, um, thank you for that clarification.
Okay. I don't see any other hands at the moment. I think that's good discussion, um, especially on the face coverings, um, which will need some more attention, so we will continue with that process. Date to be determined, uh, as far as subcommittee, but, um, stay tuned. And that would conclude policy development, um, unless Mr. Martino has other comments?
No, so I'll, um, work with Cheryl and the policy subcommittee members to schedule a meeting.
Thank you. And that would bring us to item number five, which is entertaining a motion to adjourn.
Kelly Gannett, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second for Northborough.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from, uh, Northborough, any discussion? This will be a roll call vote, Mrs. Frank?
Yes.
Mrs. Bailey Jones?
Yes.
Mrs. Gannett?
Yes.
Mrs. Tegley-Afery?
Yes.
And myself, Keith LeBelle, yes, and the Northborough Committee is adjourned, passage unanimously. Mr. Chow?
I will entertain a motion for Southborough to adjourn, the time is eight twenty-six.
It's uh, seven oh one. In, uh, in, in Northborough, it's seven oh one more. I know you guys are in a different time zone.
Whenever the motion comes through, I suppose it won't say that, yeah, I'm looking at the date, the date, you know? It's, it seems like it's eight twenty-six, I don't know why, it's been a long day.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. It's Katara.
There a second?
A second back, Kamali.
Okay, and that's now seven oh two. Uh, I'll take a roll call vote, Katara?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Uh, Jessica?
Yes.
Jennifer?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so we are adjourned.
Alright, thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.